Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mr. Petraselli?
Here.
Mr. Gaudereau?
Here.
Mr. Colasco? Mr. Verducci?
Here.
Mrs. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Schaus?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Solicitor McDermott?
Here.
Angie O'Brack?
Here.
EK?
Here.
She was saying?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
I'm here, we had technical difficulties.
Okay. I'll open my side, okay?
Hello?
Is this the public comments section? Yes. Okay, I will take that. My name is Gregory Jones, hello council members. I'm representing the one Music Fest and our organization invites you and the community to take part in our fundraising event for the Southwest Meals on Wheels program. This fundraising opportunity happening at Blaze Pizza in South Fayette on Miller's Run Road on Saturday, September 19th from 2:30 to 7:30 PM. Blaze Pizza will donate 20% of proceeds from your meal back to Southwest Meals on Wheels so long as you bring in the flyer for the event or show it on your phone during your in-restaurant purchase or enter in the promo code 1322A, A is an alpha, during your online purchase using the Blaze Pizza app or through the Blaze Pizza website. Thank you for your time and attention and we look forward to partnering with you in order to cause a seed for a good cause. Thank you. Next. If anybody else wants to speak? Going once? Twice?
Now I can do it.
The motion approved obviously September 20th, 22nd, 23rd, 24th. All favor? The motion approved September 20th, 25th, October 2nd, 29th. All favor?
Either.
That was more rusty. All in favor? Motion passed. The motion approved September 20th, 25th. All favor? The motion approved September 25th, October 2nd, 29th.
What do you want?
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. I need a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-14, resolution of the Borough of Bridgeville disposing of the records, the dis- the records manual approved July 16th, 1993, accordance with Act 428 of 1960. So, CJ and Bruce, all in favor? I oppose. Motion passed. I need a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-13, resolution of Borough of Bridgeville authorizing the participation of the dis- county to re- propose for the county to pay their property recovery for the subject of certain requirements. Motion passed. I need a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-14, resolution of Borough of Bridgeville authorizing the filing of an application for the appeal of a 4011 county, the Bar Hill Roads for our approved project and also authorize putting the project out. As soon as... Bruce, all in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passed. I need a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-15, resolution of the Borough of Bridgeville authorizing the filing of the application for the appeal of 4011 county, along with the 1800, also authorized for the county.
You have it right.
Motion opposed. Motion passed. The motion to authorize advertisement, public display of Borough ordinance number 1016, ordinance number 1016.
That doesn't sound right.
Improvement, stretch of public progress to the borough. And, all in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passed. I need a motion to authorize the advertisement, public display of Borough ordinance number 1016, an ordinance of the Borough of Bridgeville, electing to an end of non-mu- for pension plan administered by the Pennsylvania Municipal Recovery System pursuant to Article 4 of Pennsylvania Municipal Recovery Law filed by all provisions of the Pennsylvania Municipal Recovery Law, amended for applicable to the earliest powers. As soon as... And you know, uh, second? Name and nickname? Was, uh, for, uh, for some service. All in favor? Motion passed. The motion to authorize this, uh, ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Section 201, certain animals filed for due on original code warrants allowed and deepening of chickens recommended by the original grant. Nate and DJ, all in favor?
I oppose.
Vote, uh, motion passes. I need a motion to accept the 2021 minimum municipal obligation, remember, for the non-mu- for pension plan prepared by the Borough Manager, estimated to cost $68,702. Second, and you, all in favor? I oppose. Motion passed. I need a motion to accept 2021 minimum municipal obligation, the police pension plan is prepared by the Borough Manager, estimated to cost $113,100.
So moved. Second.
And you, all in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passed. I need a motion to authorize the execution of change order number 1, resulting in the contract decrease of $1 and authorize a disbursement of $132,491.77 from the Capital Projects Fund, Gregory Construction, for partial payment request number 1, make free, as I said, a law right.
I'll move it, it was really thanks for saving this moment.
Joe and, what is that? I'm sorry. Who's second? All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passed. I need a motion to authorize a dis- disbursement of $49,878.24 made in even payments, $8,313.4 to the foundations of Scott, Foyer, South Fayette and the boroughs of Green Tree, Renan, or Howard, reflecting a direct pass-through of returned assets of a terminated PDMRS, the Southwest Regional Dispatch Center pension plan, with Bridgeville as the plan sponsor.
So moved.
Second, Nate. And you, Nate.
All in favor, one comment, yeah, but that money was not taxpayer money, that was money coming from a fund and money coming in, it closed that account, money came into the Borough, all we're doing is distributing out, there was no...
Correct. Correct, yeah. What happened is the Dispatch Center closed up in the early 2000s, um, there's no retirees, there's no vested employees, there's no survivors, it's been certified and zero for probably 15 years now, uh, the former Borough Manager before she left, it requested through the Pennsylvania Municipal Power, retirement system closed the fund, which they did, and then the assets of the, of the fund, $50,000, have returned to us, uh, it was a regional entity, so it wasn't just sort of Bridgeville, it was a share amongst the member of municipal shares, so that's all we did. Okay, on the vote, all in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passed. I need a motion to authorize, in, in current, a general obligation bank of capital projects in the amount of $1,700,000. As soon as...
Nate, second.
Second, my name.
I understand.
And Joe, uh, Joe says. All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passed. I need a motion to authorize marketing and municipal advertising consultants for the purpose of publishing and borough news.
You do? Sorry. Yeah, there was, yeah, I read the agreement, is there enough of fee or independent, you know?
No, the fee works, it's, uh, he sells ads, uh, from the ad proceeds he pays for the, his letter to be published, formatted, uh, and the boroughs fault for his proposals. The bills were paid, whatever's left of the advertising sales.
And so... We have, what I thought.
It just sits in like the office.
I'm just...
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just...
Why it work?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I didn't, I hope that's what it was, I think the place is on similar, so you guys do that, well, but you go out, ah, yeah, we use it. It's a similar situation, so.
Isn't that the old phone that we used?
That was once.
Yes.
Okay, good load. All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passed. I need a motion to authorize a purchase of two 20 foot by 20 foot park facilities installed at state post-stars pricing from Gregory Associates in the amount of $37,840 from block on running.
So moved.
Uh, Joe Glass, also moved, Nate, on the second, all in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passed. I need a motion to accept and pay any commission to August 2020 real estate tax quarter.
I'll move.
Second. And Bruce, second, all in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passed. I need a motion of knowledge receipt of the July, August 2020 Treasury.
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passed. I need a motion to accept the August 2020 recent report.
I'll move. Second.
Lucidly, all in favor?
I oppose.
Motion passed. All right, we're gonna move on to committee reports. Administration.
Thanks, Bill, um, just to add on to the borough newsletter for our residents throughout the fall, um, it's an ongoing effort to keep the citizens informed, um, council, mayor, and, um, the Borough Manager, we met with the attendants and talked to discuss all those issues, how they're just gonna stay in the past, um, but the intent is to create an annual borough newsletter that started in 2020 and provide information, um, for our residents, like, uh, the annual calendar events for council meetings, so for those residents, they can have access to the internet or application, it's just another way of making, and it's not something that we think they're expensive for, for the residents, the taxpayers, because they have a type of pay for that, so, um, it would also include any events for, um, the fire department, the library, get the dates of the Easter, Easter Bunny Parade or the Halloween Parade, just like, uh, things like that, and in addition to that, um, if there are things that come up and we want to provide information to residents, we could have, like, give them a census report, we will want a short, close signing information letter that we're contracting to the Department of the Old and Poor new bases to keep residents informed, so that's something that we're working towards, we've been excited, and we've been working on that for a while, um, and we are also going to, um, lastly, we're getting closer to providing or purchasing a community messaging sign that would be placed next to the borough building, that's even an attempt to keep residents, businesses, in little ways, to come, or, or, um, just so we can get this, or, engage to everybody. And the phone system, so I just wanted to mention if anybody was having trouble this week, the last week, Charlie, um, getting through to the borough building, there was some trouble with the phones, um, when the brand ran, bringing in, uh, paying up, so there were some glitches and they have heard they're being on a new phone system, so we're looking at not being on the phone system.
Great.
Right. I'm calling.
Good, thank you. Uh, funny, Joe. Thank you, uh, and as everybody saw that we, we won for 1.7 million dollars, uh, the decision was made to, uh, include Sharter's Park in the projects that we want to get done, uh, that project is targeted for next year though, uh, but rates are so cheap, we decided to just move forward and do everything, we've also applied for two additional grants for Sharter's Parks, we're hoping that we will be able to just continue on and, and get things done that we want to do as far as projects and, uh, and take advantage of the very low rates that we're able to get off that, uh, really excited for us to do for a bit. All right. Of course, we're here, Joe Glass.
Uh, yeah, real short and sweet, the work down McLaughlin Park is progressing pretty well, as you drive by there, you can hear it's a lot of dirt being moved, and I guess they're on schedule, uh, hoping to coordinate the project with the, uh, lowering of the ball field, try to protect the pavement, I think that should be able to be accomplished and, uh, pretty excited about getting the park done down there, and Sharter's Park, that's an ongoing thing, and hopefully we'll get some of that grant money to help raise some of the costs, but, uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any, any questions for Joe, who was a little, thank you, I, for you, yeah, that's, okay, thank you, we're good. Public Works.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, first of all, I want to say that, uh, you know, the public works can, in, in there, we have, uh, people that take vacations and everything that's, I had a nice meeting today with Joe, and, uh, you're already thinking about that, and I'm sure that the, uh, the financial community is gonna hear it, Joe, but, but that, uh, before they're gonna be here to, to do something by the first year for a pay in person, I believe that's what, Joe, I don't know, you know, getting straight up to the, where to find it, yeah, for where one person, do all the vacation and, and seven, seven, you're gonna be very little, work to pay for that, would be one of the particular things that we, that we, that we, by the time he is on vacation, preparation of the everything else, he's gonna give us very, very, you know, deduction. Uh, we can press the parts, size of the road, you know, clean up later, empty trash replacement, roof paving impact, line of vehicles, respect screen, and, uh, can be served, be, uh, made for, where they probably put, in the grease, you want, and it's, well.
Thank you, Nate. Okay, um, other thing I have is, I was talking to Mike Palmer, who we appointed as our urban management coordinator, um, he thought about trying to, took together an alternate AC dot com, and, uh, I haven't had a chance to talk to Joe, uh, whether he'd be interested in that position or not, I, I really might talk to you, Mark, but I don't know how everybody else feels, uh, to the point, Joe, this, well, and, uh, Mark's management, yeah, and Doug, everybody, I, I motion through that.
It's very patient.
Yeah, and I just went a little bit, and be a good guy, yeah. Nice. Let me get the motion, and Nate, second, and all in favor?
I.
Oppose? Motion passed. That's all I have. Mayor, I don't hurt.
I attended, uh, the House, the last speech, State Mayor, so, received the Pennsylvania State Mayor's Award, he was presented a plaque for being the outstanding mayor of the year, and on Friday, I attended the nine, the health service at Coles, Christie Parish, our father chief, Ray Coste, gave an outstanding speech, I spoke as well, service was well attended, and...
Thank you. Please, you check it.
Thank you, Council President, um, those police officers started mid-August, late August, started the schedule, late August, today, now we're starting, maybe the month, and we got a couple of ops on, August 26th, sponsored by our team insurance, and final number, Brandon, uh, 240, 250, no problems, and, and it was pretty good turnout, so, pretty locations, and we ended up in eight miles, they think it's a drug off, sure, you're fine, you know, aside from that, I survived, it was important, but it's, thank you.
Question two. Listen, Tom, there, like I said, you can monitor this. Right? Uh, what was your, Kevin Brack?
Hi, yes, good evening, everybody, um, uh, our report, uh, was submitted and a couple updates, the 2020 road program, um, contract, we've been in discussions with them, they're gonna be in mid-October to, um, complete the work, uh, we have submitted also, uh, for next week for a meeting with the road committee, the, um, long-term road plan. And, uh, we did have our pre-construction meeting on the GDF projects for, um, the county grants for Janeway, McLaughlin Run, uh, project, uh, faced, uh, for the flood control and for Bar Hill Road, uh, those advertisements were sent out today since we did have that meeting, and the notices that the county required were also sent out, uh, those bids will open on October 8th and be able to be awarded at your next meeting. Uh, we did include in our memo now, a, uh, listing of all the grants that's been received, uh, the grant value as, as well as the borough match and any anticipated start date, so we can track those moving forward. Uh, Backflow Preventer Project, uh, it'll be ready to go out to bid as soon as the HOP comes, um, we would like to work, open that for the October meeting also, um, but we have not received the HOP, cause, um, different than the other projects, these all, uh, required an HOP, uh, from the state. And that's the last item I have, any questions?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Our chief, I believe is on, I don't want to hear too much.
Uh, hey, Brian. So, all of us, obviously, had a, uh, one need, all preventative assistance, there are, uh, nine of those, uh, similar to the last, and, uh, basically, it's called, uh, uh, we also, coming up here, they have our Slight School Pass, probably coming out for the month of December, I'll look at tickets, I'm at it real shortly, so if you see any member, fire department, uh, you can sometimes, um, you can treat right by the very lane, so if you see the guy down there, you can take it, but I'm...
Thank you. Uh, South River EMS, you have one? And that's pretty, they're good, he's on.
Okay.
Joe?
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you go.
Sorry about that, um, we did submit statistics for the year to date for you, hopefully we're able to get those, um, when it comes to EMS, we've been still challenged by COVID-19 trying to deal with that, uh, it's created quite the challenge with call volumes surging in one day or two and then going to absolutely nothing the next day or two, so it's created quite the staffing and financial challenge to try and keep pace with all of that, um, we have lucked out with some of the government programs to keep us financially going, um, as you know, we, we make our revenue by billing for transports that we do, and without those being there from the COVID, uh, issues, um, you know, we've, uh, reduced our financial income, but, uh, again, government assistance and the Payroll Protection Act and things have kind of helped us move along and keep us, keep us going for you, so, uh, other than that, everything is, else has been fairly status quo.
I agree, I think, uh, the plan. Good. Uh, anyone from the, uh, saying?
President lies, I have to say, that has all the time to go to the rail yard and deal, but also purchase some raffle tickets, because we want to be able to have our usual fundraisers, we are doing this raffle, um, Caleb, has some beautiful baskets there as well as a coin hoagie that's, um, also for raffles, and we're also having, you see my program last season, in this month, that, the fire department, so, not so...
Thank you, Secretary.
Hey, Bill.
In the library.
Bill, I'm wondering, my computer's screening, I've done like a phone call trying to come in, I don't know if you guys are getting that, or...
This is, this is Ray, I think, is Ben here, I don't know if Ben was on or not?
Yeah, I'm here as well, Ray.
Okay, go ahead, Ben.
Thanks, uh, so this is Ben Hornbeck, library director, um, I just wanted to take a few minutes tonight to share an update about the library as well as Love Your Library Month, um, I know Ray has come to a couple meetings recently, but, um, in case you haven't heard from the library, we did, much like the rest of the world, close down on March 13th, but we have, um, pretty much immediately went to virtual programming, which we are continuing through the fall, um, just for safety precautions, obviously, so, it, all of that programming is available on Facebook and YouTube, um, our programming staff is doing an excellent job with creating videos, they're all mostly pre-recorded, um, and that's for ease of access, so people can watch them whenever it's most convenient to them, um, we do have live storytimes on Monday and Friday that are on Facebook as well, um, since then, in June, we started doing curbside pickup appointments, uh, that's been going very well, in August, we were able to execute 372 curbside appointments, um, between Monday and Thursday, um, that said, I'm pleased to announce that on Monday, September 21st, we have our soft launch reopening, that we will begin letting patrons back into the library again, um, it will be obviously adapted services, so we're asking people to limit their visit to approximately 45 minutes or less, um, for safety, um, computers will be available by appointment and then, um, but they can, they're welcome to browse, um, obviously pick up any materials and curbside pickup will still be available as well, um, also in September, it is once again Love Your Library Month, um, I did email all of you, hopefully you'll receive it, um, information about Love Your Library, again, it's a countywide initiative, it's designed to promote awareness of and giving to libraries throughout September, so obviously that can be done with just a direct donation, um, but we do have some fun stuff going on to promote the support of Bridgeville Library, so one of those things, we're having a trivia night next Thursday, um, it's virtual, you can sign up online, it's, you can actually do it for free, but we're encouraging donations, so again, that's Thursday, September 24th, um, we also have a flamingo fundraiser right now, you can go online, onto our website and sign up to have your house or someone's house you know or a business, um, flocked with flamingos, we'll bring the flamingos overnight, they're there for a day, and then they'll move on to the next location, um, you can also purchase a flamingo book, which we will leave for you if you would like, um, when we flock the person's house, um, so that's all going on through the end of September, and again, any of this money that we raise is eligible for a prorated match from the Jack Buncher Foundation, uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, anybody from the department, anybody join? Okay, I had a thought, Mike, uh, so he's, he, he was coming in from the greenhouse, but he, uh, he said he knows the dude, so, I don't know if there's somebody else on there who, of course, yeah, I had acquired, except for that, they're not having meetings, and... All right. Okay, uh, any condition? Is Dale on? Jim? Him on? Are you, are you seeing one?
Oh, I'm sorry, I hit unmute.
Sorry, I hit unmute. Um, I, I actually wasn't at the last meeting, um. So, I know that the topic of chickens came up, and I just got an update about, you know, uh, and I, I'm sure. I know you guys were on the me- some of you guys were on the meeting, so, um, I know it's, uh. You got put to vote, and you guys know the outcome of that, so, that's the only update I had.
Thanks, Mike. Well, Roman, your joke, pal.
Uh, my report was submitted for the month, but it's just a note where the item that Borough, uh, platform received a hundred twenty five thousand dollars. Up to the county, the Paris Act funding, it kind of helps us mitigate. Uh, another note where the item, I think I wrote this before, project updates. Uh, then at the end, this code report for the month that highlights also. Perpetual issued, a compromise violation sent out, we've been very proactive, trying to. For the compliance comments, you can see it very deep, but I like this. Uh. Happy report, a lot is to be debated, very expeditious, so, uh, it's gone pretty smooth, uh. And, uh, we'll keep this running along and hopefully, uh. See some good progress. That, that's all I have. If you have any questions, thank you, Pat.
I'm just happy to see my ass.
Any questions for Joe? Okay, honor, Chamber Old Business. Chamber Old Business.
Oh, one thing, Chamber, uh, car raffle. Been, uh, done at the end of the month, right here, the thirtieth at the rail yard. Um, supports the Chamber that's done very well to. To stay afloat, but, uh, I hope, uh, it would be great to, to help them as well, so. Come down on the thirtieth, buy a ticket, stop by the Chamber. Brooklyn Bank, all size tickets, hurry your days, and as well. So up to seven hundred and fifty tickets, but to be honest with you, most times they sell around five hundred and six hundred. Two-year-olds are real good, and then the rail yard is about to be tossed on, so, yes.
How about New Business, anything on New Business? How about New Business? All in favor? Second, one second? All in favor?
Uh.